This conference will now be recorded.
All right, everybody, it is now just after seven o'clock on Tuesday, July 22nd, 2025. I'll call this regular meeting of council to order here at the Social Scene in Victoria Beach. I respectfully acknowledge that we are meeting here on Treaty One territory, the traditional homeland of the Anishinaabe, Cree, Ensign, and New Nations Dakota, Assiniboing, and Dene people, and the homeland of the Red River Matisse. We acknowledge the harms and mistakes of the past, and we dedicate ourselves to find ways to move forward in partnership with First Nations and Matisse communities in the spirit of reconciliation and collaboration. Before we move into introductions, I would again like to remind residents and visitors that abusive, rude, or disrespectful comments and behavior against any of council, our staff, or our community members actually, will not be tolerated. Should we feel that this is occurring, we will stop the meeting until we can move forward respectfully. All right, introductions are on the table on my far left.
Ian Chatsey, councillor.
Long Term CAO.
Urban Copco, councillor.
Graham Radnor, councillor.
Kenny McMorris, mayor, and on the screen.
Steve Axroby.
Thank you. All right, everybody, welcome. All right, we'll move on to adoption of the agenda. Be it resolved, the agenda be adopted as presented. May I have a mover? Ian, thank you. Second. Graham, thank you. Any additions, gentlemen? Erwin?
Will we need to formally establish the Education Tax Committee?
Unless it's not, unless it's a subcommittee of council, which I don't think you're vying for.
I think it's a voluntary committee.
Okay, just a question, I wasn't sure.
So that does not need to be added to the agenda?
Correct.
All right. Anything further, gentlemen? All those in favor? Carrie, thank you. All right, moving on to the minutes. Be it resolved, the minutes of the July 8th, 2025, regular meeting with council be adopted as presented. May I have a mover? Ian, thank you. Second. Steve, thanks very much. Any comments on the minutes of meeting, gentlemen? All right, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Moving on to committee reports. Let's receive my committee report from Public Works. Door-to-door garbage pickup continues three days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, until September 3rd. Garbage must be left on the edge of the road allowance, not in your yard. Public Works continues to pick up random, late, brush piles and bagged leaves. Please do not add any more brush to the brush piles. Damaged old culverts have been replaced on Beach Crescent and Hakoa. Ongoing working communications with Valley Fiber and Non-Limits Underground continue. The grass in the flower beds are tended to on an ongoing basis. Dead and dangerous trees are looked at and removed when possible, and Public Works has a very long list of dead, deceased, dangerous trees. Please mark any trees you are concerned about, and an arborist will continue with as much dangerous tree removal as the budget will allow. E-service requests are completed as quickly as possible. Water samples for Victoria Beach, Outer Beach, and the Fire Hall are taken regularly throughout the summer and submitted to the lab in Winnipeg for mandatory testing. Rating of our roads is ongoing. Water leaks are repaired as they are reported. Civic signs can be ordered through Public Works payable to the RM of Victoria Beach, and those are installed usually in the fall. Public Works emergency or after-hours number is 204-756-2568. Ian?
Just a quick question on the garbage pickup. Is that the same for the non-restricted area, like Monday, Wednesday, Friday?
There's different areas get picked up on Monday, and another area on Tuesday, and I think outside the, I think the north end in Wannsee maybe gets Wednesday.
Okay, so it's really only once a week then?
It's once a week per area, right.
Okay.
Right. And then the guys are busy on weekends too. There's one guy running around with a garbage truck. Hello, hello? There we go, I'll try that one. All right, I will move on to finance. Ian, do you have a finance report, please?
I do. It's not a long one. Cash and deposits, 909,324. We had 1.85 million for the Fire Hall and the fire truck. There's 3.1 million in tax on the roll. Is that going to be reflected, or is that going to be, it's just that's what we're expecting?
It's like an accounts receivable.
Okay. Total assets are 12,000, 12.2 thousand, sorry, million. Total liabilities, 3.6, and total surplus is 8.5. So that's the balance sheet. Operations, all departments have variances about 50, so that's remarkable this time of year. So they have more than half their budget left, which is great. So I think they're in good shape. We'll see how things look in August. Total expenditures are 1.4 million, leaving about 4.3 available.
Great, thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you. Moving on to fires. Steve, do you have a fire report for us, please?
Yeah, I do. So I'm just gonna try the same thing as I did the last time to get the report halfway through. So just a reminder, please remove your coniferous trees or evergreens from your properties and replace them with drought-resistant trees. Deciduous trees, the leafy kind, they're infinitely safer. So far, people are actually doing a very good job, and it is noticeable around the community. Both Brad's and several of the people familiar with forestry have noticed substantial difference in the municipality, but there's still a lot more work to do. Also, familiarize yourself with the Family Emergency Handbook, which is, which you can find on our website, and review the Fire Smart program. The Victoria Beach Fire Department had six calls in June, three calls in each of the two RMs that the Fire Department Service operates in. In the Arm of Victoria Beach, there were six calls in June, three calls, oh, sorry, sorry, I apologize, I was repeating myself. In the Arm of Victoria Beach, we attended a lift assist for Pine Falls ambulance, a hydro line that fell to the ground, and a false alarm. The Fire Department attended three calls in the Arm of Alexander. One was for a hydro pole on fire. The Fire Department made the air safety monitor the fire until hydro could attend. Hydro shut off the power, and they made sure the fire was out before they left. The Fire Department attended an MVA with no injuries and set up a landing zone with the help of VB police and Star's ambulance. The Fire Department continues to maintain their equipment and gear in preparation for any calls they will receive and are back, and are not quite back to their regular training in the summer months, but will pick that up afterwards. And one final note, please really consider if having a wood fire pit is absolutely necessary. Gas fire pits are substantially safer over woods, and on a positive note, they burn 99% of all the emissions, so they're actually better for the environment. And they are generally considered substantially safer than wood fire pits, although you do still need a permit.
Thank you, Steve. Any comments, gentlemen? All right, thanks very much, Steve. Moving on to police. Erwin, please.
I am pleased to report that we, our new chief constable, has worked hard to get all of the incident reporting now up to date. We have stats for both police and CSO. They have been very busy. Talking about the police, we've had our first break-in recorded in June for all of this year. Although we're not shared, I'm not shared with details exactly what happened, it did occur. There were, the Police Department handed out seven Highway Traffic Act tickets, and they dealt with one impaired driver. There's been a total of three this year. Let's see here. There were 12 laser tickets handed out for speeding in June, and four tickets, four warnings handed out by the police. By the CSO people have been also very busy dealing with issues of, they issued 12 parking, probably nine parking tickets in June. They issued 11 Highway Traffic Act violations, and they were involved with 23 speeding issues with their laser equipment. And they issued seven warnings. So in total, the CSOs completed 255 activities in the month of June, and our police completed 224. So the police are busy, the CSOs are busy, and the most important part of any policing program is visibility. I think both the combination of vehicles and the e-bikes that are being used within the VR area and other areas are helping to reduce crime. We hear about things going on in other municipalities, and things are much better here in Victoria Beach. Just a comment on the homicide. Unfortunately, to date, there has been no arrests made, but the investigations are ongoing. In time, perhaps the culprits will be apprehended.
Thank you. Any comments, gentlemen? All right, thank you, Erwin.
Steve, have a question.
Oh, sorry, Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, I meant to say this at the last meeting. When I was there and Dane was just outside of where that incident had happened, there was somebody who went by and had mentioned something to this person which seemed obscure. But I told them to go over and report to the police, and the police were very thankful for it, to give them some really good information. So I just wanted to remind any residents who either saw anything on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, anything suspicious on that day that those murders had happened. It might seem insignificant to you. It might seem as though it won't be that big of a deal, but it could help them make an arrest. So if you noticed anything on that day in relation to those two people or that property or anything around that area, just please come forward, because the chances are is that somebody else has not reported what you saw or heard.
Okay, thank you very much, Steve. All right, I'll move on to golf course. Ian, please.
Graham's done some work on the golf course, locks around the doors. The golf carts are the new golf carts, plus the ones that are there, they're seventh, they're ranking, they're ranking very well. So there's collecting comments from that. Revenues are stronger this year than last year. For the month of June and the first few weeks in July, there was a tournament this week with the children, or kids, I guess, 72 of them. Or last week, I guess, and there was, the winner shot 37, which is incredible. So they're thinking maybe next year, the winner of the kids' tournament should compete with the men, and their tournament. So they're gonna propose that anyways. Tournament this week coming up, there's 67 entries, which is about nine higher than for last year for the men's. And that's all hip and hoorah. Oh, and the mic's been picked up by someone very nice.
Yes, it has, and handed it all. All right, and we had a couple incidents actually the last week and a half where some golfers decided it was okay to drive the golf carts to the parking lot. So Elaine has addressed it. She's put a sign up saying the carts are not to leave the golf course.
Well, I forgot to mention that. I did talk to her about that, and I said the easiest way to solve that is to let them know that there's no vehicles allowed on those trails, and that you have your name and you report to the police, because you can't take it off the property. And if you do, then you will be reported to the police. So I think that should stop it.
That's cool. All right, and I just want to add thanks to Elaine and her office crew, and Adam and his grounds crew. They've done a tremendous job, and I'm hearing nothing but positive reports about them and the course, so kudos to them.
But also, the course is in great shape, so yeah, they're having a good year.
All right, any other comments on golf? All right. Moving on to municipal buildings, buildings, please, Graham.
Okay, that's me, and as usual, I put this in point form for efficiency revenue. Stairs, stairs are a big issue ever this year. We're pretty well complete the basic repairs to the Seventh Avenue stairs and the Patricia stairs. Chad and the contractor, and he's just putting the finishing touches on. Those were two that were particularly the Seventh Avenue, they were slated for a much bigger production, but we had to cut that back for legislative concerns. So we've been through, we've been through pretty well all the stairs so far this year. Any of the ones that got fixed or patched up or reinforced, are, we're gonna try and get them on the list for new stairs for next year. So next year will be a pretty big year for stairs. We hope to make most of them up to accessibility standards. Now, nobody takes a wheelchair up and down these stairs. It just doesn't work. But there are a lot of people with forms of disability that need to use handrails while they're going up and down stairs. So this implies a different design of stair altogether. The steps have to be 48 inches so that we have enough room between the verticals to hang the accessible steel handrails. So it's a different deal, but we think that we owe that to those people who have to use handrails going up and down. So we're trying to, we're trying to catch that up. They're awfully expensive. They're having a cost of $100 a foot going up and down. But we've made a commitment, we've done, we've made credit in progress so far, and until council tells us we just stop, we're gonna stick with it, okay? One other one, this is interesting. We were chatting the other day about what are we going to do with the unclaimed stairs? Well, I came across one that was reported to Penny and I, a set of stairs along Victoria Boulevard. They didn't belong to anybody, or nobody knew who hit them or who created them. And they were, I had them inspected, and they were deemed unsafe. I've since had them removed, or maybe that's set to precedent. We've got unclaimed dangerous stairs. Sooner or later, we'll get around to removing them, please.
Excuse me, thank you. Thank you.
Actually, you're not allowed to do that. Sorry. Yeah, all right.
Now you don't.
Now you know. Okay. Moving right along to bakery. Four hundred yards of bakery, but what are you gonna do? We had to replace one of the air conditioner units, the old one that calmed down to a front display area. These ceiling lights in the front display all had to be rewired. That was the, I told by our electrician that that was the last of the crappy old circuits. We shouldn't have any more. He spent hours there, and the bill was quite a big one that Ian might have seen him go through. But he ran all new, all new circuits and new fixtures, so that's okay. That's fixed, that's in place. So just when that's all under control, I get a phone call that the exhaust system, the ventilation system, doesn't seem to be keeping up. We have a vent duct system that evaporates heat from the head of the electric fringes. It's kind of complicated, but they make a lot of heat. This is the only way we have of getting it out of there, and it's not quite keeping up. So with Lance's permission, I've given our favorite high-end contractor the authority to go in and do, and do an evaluation of the venting system in the bakery at our expense. Unfortunately, he said it just shouldn't take more than a few hours at his normal rates. That's fine. We can swallow that. And he'll follow that up with quotes. We don't know whether he's gonna input or recommend a bigger capacity fan in the one we have now, or a secondary, or whether we're even gonna do this. But we're obliged to look into it because the issue has surfaced itself. So I'll keep, I'll keep our council advisements as we go along with that. I'm sure you're all getting tired of spending money on the bakery. But it is what it is, and it's kind of a jewel in our municipal crown. Jen has done a wonderful job. It's an asset to the community. People enjoy it. Fortunately, workplace health and safety has never reared its ugly head over the temperatures in there. So we want to try and stay a step ahead of them. Next, toilets, our toilets. We only have five toilets, but they take a fair amount of feeding and care. Recently, I checked all, all five toilets, making sure the minor repairs have been attended to. I placed waste baskets in all of them that didn't have them. And we've got an agreement with our subject service selected contractor to pump the tennis court and the new accessible washroom weekly through June, July, and August. We agreed on this towards the tail end of June. And furthermore, the other two toilets that we have, which are the waterless toilets at Pier Point and Sappy Road, no one was quite sure when to do them, and that kind of got overlooked. We have the building in place now that they will be flushed out thoroughly at the end of the season. And he recommends that we leave some, leave some water in them so that they don't flood them. So that works after the washrooms. Well, washrooms, washroom is kind of the wrong expression for a waterless toilet, but you know what I mean. We don't like the call of outages, the two of them. Golf courts, Ian's already covered that. We've got a contractor who's working on repairs to the bank of three lockers. There were some issues that need to be addressed. That's under control. That work is in progress. The accessible handrails have now been installed for the two conventional washroom toilets at the golf course. And installing the six locker key fests, that's been looked after. Yellow lines, painting the yellow lines on wood steps throughout municipal buildings where necessary, that is in the works. I'm kind of disappointed they're not finished by now, but we've loaded quite a bit of stuff on this contractor. So the paint has been bought. It is being done in the next week or two. At last, but not this, the problematic steps at Sandy Bay over the moon. Once again, we're faced with shoveling tons of sand off those steps. It's a tedious job. It's expensive. We've tried getting it to the Fire Department years ago. They didn't like it. We keep trying to get it to Public Works. They don't really want it. We gave it to a private contractor one year for what, $1,700 or some ridiculous thing. I've got our friend Seth Anderson, an local contractor, he's taking a look. He's gonna give me a price, but he doesn't really like doing that kind of work, so his price is gonna reflect that. We tried spraying the sand off with water drunk in the lagoon there. We even bought special nozzles years ago with the Fire Department. It's a real nuisance. Shoveling them off, you're looking at ten guys with shovels for eight hours. It's that much, or six hours. It's that much stuff there. He came up with an idea that might help reduce the buildup of sand as far as some fill-in panels along the roads as they go up and over the bend. I have said, very inspiring for me, that that's a wonderful idea, but it's not going to work because the latest informed consensus is the sand is blowing up from the beach. It's not blowing sand base. It's a hell of a problem. And it's a nuisance for us every year, because if you allow that sand to build up, it increases the load on the wood. Anytime it rains, that sand gets wet, and then you've got soaking wet sand, which tends to promote the rotting of the wood and premature decay. All kinds of nasty things happen if we don't keep up with it, and we've been challenged to try and keep up with it each and every year. And it's not going away. There's no place to hide. I'll continue trying to find an analytical method to have it done this year, it needs to be done, unless we want to try and organize a volunteer day, you know, guys with shovels. But it really starts up, you know, it really adds up if guys with shovels are being paid a living wage, you know what I mean? I'll continue with this as the best that I can, best I can. But right now, we're at the point where I'm expecting a price, which is gonna be pretty godly, probably $1,200 or something like that. But those steps are used quite a bit. They're popular. There's a trail from the beach, and then there's also the access of Ogle Orson. I've never been there without encountering one or more people going back and forth. They're, they're an asset they're used. And until we're, until we're prepared to rip them all out, God help us with that, we are obliged to keep them navigable, usable, serviceable. So it's on our heads until otherwise advised, so I'll stick with it. I'm determined to get them cleaned up at least once this year. They shouldn't be done twice. Anyway, on that exciting note, I'll conclude my municipal buildings report. Thank you. Yes?
You could add to that list the stairs over at Senex. They're, and those are the types that you can
The ladder?
The ladder, you can lift them up, but the holes are so deep, it's like a trough. So, you know, if you find somebody, have them take a look at that too.
I was, I was wondering when somebody was gonna point out that, that I seem to be skating around the sand ladder at the, at the cliffs. We have to find somebody who can take a look at them and provide some reasonable solutions and give us a price. A lot of that work had been done and orchestrated through myself and Mike Bartmanovich. And that's kind of fallen through the cracks. I haven't visited them yet this year. But it is an issue, and you're quite right. I will add them to the list. I'm not sure what we're gonna do about them. But it appears that we need several quotes from people on rehabilitation.
There was a guy, I think, I think on Lakewood, that used to go there with a shovel.
Yeah, I don't even remember his name.
I don't know his name, but I know his dog. Always walks by my house. But I could go ask him, because he used to do it, and I think we used to give $1,000. And he did it, he would go there beginning of the year, and he'd lift up those ladders, and then he'd fill all the holes.
Yeah, I would play somebody who puts some sand mix to help with the landing when you get to the ground. I would very much appreciate if you would send me his particular, or sort of put him in touch with me. That would save me a lot of, a lot of, hopefully, you know, still interested. Okay, thanks very much.
You might also want to talk to Wolf. He was the one who installed them, Ian Grantmuir. And it might be a heavy equipment job in the fall to do, you know, a proper job of lifting them up, because they're both.
Yeah, if it turns out to be more than a guy with a shovel, it would have to be either Wolf or or Deck Divisty, or somebody with some equipment. But the problem with the equipment is if you have to haul materials in and this and that and the other, you gotta wait till precept so you can get machine rig in off the ice. So that waves it out for this year. Hopefully, this guy is still around and can help us with this. The only other possibility I can think of is I found out through Mike's wife, Caroline, we've used, he started to use the painting jobs, that his brother, what's the ex's brother's name?
Jason.
Jason, Jason. That he indicated that he might be available for some jobs. I'll reach out to him on the sand cliffs just for the hell of it, and you'll give me the name of the guy who's
Absolutely.
Okay.
If you're willing to.
Democracy in action. Thank you, Ian.
I just want to thank our guest speaker.
Many people don't realize how much work Graham does in the background. If he calls a contractor and they don't answer, he usually has their mother's phone number as well, and so he's relentless.
Don't return my call. I'll phone your mother or your wife.
Yeah. Thank you, Graham. Yeah, thank you, Graham.
Guilty.
All right, moving on to the Doctors Cottage and Committee. Steve, can I have a report, please?
So the bunk beds have been installed, the cabin cleaning is working well this year so far. There are a couple issues which I forwarded over to Graham, just some little bit of leaking here and there, something to do with the sink and the flower boxes are starting to fall apart, so again, forwarded this over to Graham, so hopefully somebody will be able to come over and just repair them. Somebody wants to volunteer, that'd be great. I also, I was going to have a meeting regarding the vegetation around the cabin, we weren't able to get that done before today's council meeting. But basically, it's just taking a look at some fairly hazardous trees as well as what's necessary for fire smart. And if anybody in the communities who's taken a look at this council meeting tonight is meeting with their doctor in the next little while, if you can get them to reach out to the committee, that'd be great, just send me an email, because we like to put together a more robust list for next year. Although for the rest of the year, we should be good, but it would be nice if we could be able to get a couple more weeks at the tail end of every year to have that much more protection for the community. But again, if you are seeing your senior family doctor in the next little while, if you even have one, then yeah, just let them know that they can come up to Victoria Beach to stay with us for a couple weeks in the summer, and you know, we can put together a stronger list.
Okay, thanks very much.
Steve, I'll call you later, or else I'll arrange to meet you at the Doctors' Cabin, Doctors' Cottage. There was a few minor deficiencies at the beginning of the year, but you've mentioned a couple of others that have crossed my desk, so we'll talk later and I'll meet you there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, gentlemen. Communications, thanks to VV Herald, who continues to save us space every week to put an article in. We also use our official VV Facebook page for updates, and when warranted, we use our VV Connect emergency service. So please make sure that you are signed up for VV Connect so that we can provide you with up-to-date information should an emergency occur, or timely information on other emergency or important topics. Info Office is next, they continue to be busy at the Info Office, thanks to Caitlin, Noah, and Jillian for doing a great job this summer. Weekends are particularly busy here, and at the parking lot actually, with residents and visitors coming here discovering what VV has to offer. Unfortunately, this year, some visitors seem to think that we are part of Grand Beach Provincial Park. It's not new this year, but the provincial park system has provided free entry this year, and some people think that we are part of Grand Beach. So they come to the Info Office, wave their parks pass, and go in. So Caitlin has chased a couple down, but it's a little difficult. So the police have been called from time to time, the CSOs have been called, and some tickets have been issued when they can find the offenders. I do want to remind all residents that all of our beaches are green spaces and our public spaces are indeed public. And we regulate traffic in the vehicle restricted area, but we do not regulate people. So please remember that the public beach along the causeway is popular, the beach north of Pitt Road in Albert Beach is popular, and the 504 has seen a fair amount of traffic, although I think that's come down a bit with the new travel speed boat launch. I don't know if any of you guys have been over there, but I've heard that it's made a difference. All right, that's sort of all I have on that. Go ahead, Steve.
Again, I'd like to throw the request to council that we put together a request to the province to separate the signage along 59 with the Grand Beach sign and Victoria Beach sign, and to move all the amenity signs that are on the way to Grand Beach after the turnoff, and move those amenity signs onto 59 underneath of the Grand Beach sign. Because that would point the day trippers who are wanting to go to Grand Beach, thinking Victoria Beach is Grand Beach, and it would point them into the direction that they actually want to go. If we separate those two signs and put all the amenity signs underneath of the Grand Beach sign, they will know if you turn left to go to Grand Beach, that's where the amenities are, and that is where I'm trying to go. If you don't, and you keep Victoria Beach over top of Grand Beach, you're connecting the two in the minds of day trippers. I've heard from a lot of people that they think when they get here that we have all these amenities that Grand Beach is supposed to have, and we do not. So that is a very simple and easy way that we could curtail this problem, which you've raised and comes up every single year and is getting worse.
Don't forget, Google Maps also directs people to Victoria Beach as well, and you know, we are public, we're not private, so people are more than welcome to come here and see what we do have to offer. So I think we're going to need to be careful.
They're not trying to get to us, though, that's the thing, right? They're not trying to get to us, they're trying to get to where the amenities are, and they're trying to get...
No, really, I'm not so sure about that. I think it's, I think it's, people have been to Grand Beach and they want to see what Victoria Beach has to offer, and we all adhere to agreements, pretty special.
Steve, you've brought this up a number of times, to your credit, I'm going to say, as far as writing to highways or calling infrastructure now. Lon, is that something you feel comfortable doing? You know, what you would put in letters to them, ask them to change their signage?
Yep, sure do. Yep, you betcha. I'll run it by Steve too before I send it.
Well, yeah.
Or you guys, council.
Okay, well, with that, let's take a run at it, see what they have to do for us. Thank you, Lon.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Steve. Moving on to building inspector, Graham, back to you.
Oh, oh, you'll be happy to know that Curtis Boden is more succinct than me. His reports are the soul of gravity. For permits, we have two development, one leveling job, two sheds, two addition, one fence, one sunroom, four ducks, and one garage. The value of permits issued during the month of June were $252,000, and the fees collected during the month of June were a little $5,000. So year to date, we're looking at permits of two and a half million dollars. It's not bad, it's down a little bit, the high point was, what, two, three years ago, where people were building their own cottages, but we're up to two and a half million dollars now, and we have collected $22,000 in building permit fees so far year to date. So thank you, Curtis, for your building inspector report.
Thank you, any comments? All right, hearing none, I'll move on to trails. A couple meetings ago, we announced that we got a couple grants for trails mapping, and I volunteered to work with HTFC, which is a landscape architecture firm. I met virtually with two reps from HTFC and three residents who are involved in our trails use a week and a half or so ago. We were discussing the trails mapping and GPS updating, and we were also talking about getting other groups involved who weren't able to attend the first meeting, so there will be one more consultation in that respect. And then one of the trails, one of the people with HTFC was raised here, and he will be walking the trails with their fancy GPS systems to make sure they're all up to date, because some of them have changed with some infrastructure in the last couple of years. So I'm excited about that, should have a lot of it done by the end of the summer. Any other comments on trails? All right, hearing none, I'll move over to...
One quick thing is, just to, I just want to put this to rest, the, Victoria Beach has no plans to move any trails or to add any trails or to extend any trails anywhere in Victoria Beach. If that conversation's going to happen, it has to happen at least a year in advance. There was a couple of people who tried to bring the idea forward, but council's not willing, at least at this time, to extend any trails. There will be one that's moved, that would be the schoolhouse trail, I believe it is, and it would just be moving over a little bit, because it comes on the west side of gravel pit, and the gravel pit is approaching on it. Outside of that, there is no plans at all to move or add trails to the Victoria Beach system.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the Moonlight Inn, back to you, Graham. Get the microphone on.
Okay, as usual, I submitted my report to council a day or so ago. It contains the minutes of the July 4th site meeting, and as the Moonlight Inn takes shape more and more, they've actually accelerated the pace of the site meeting meetings, you'll notice, they're almost weekly now. So that's for council's information. And Lon, this, I'll throw a ear clock in, this contains a bunch of the latest photos, which are really quite remarkable. It occurred to me, Lon, oh, and how long ago was my request, as you put them up on our website? But just to give them a little more exposure to people who may attend these meetings or watch the screening of these meetings in future, could you generate them on your computer so they show up on the screen?
I'm sure I could, you're asking, remind me for a council meeting.
Well, you've got thirty days to figure it out, that'll be the next meeting where we go through the ordeal of committee reports, so I'll work out the details with that. I just think it would give it a little bit more exposure, people can actually see. Apparently, some people actually watch these movies, I mean, watch these proceedings.
Yep.
Who do? Okay. Anyway, things proceeding very well at the end, and as you'll be able to see from the photos that I've sent you and the ones that I've written up on the website, it's just coming together beautifully. It's going to be a center attraction.
No, next, open?
I was still looking at...
So this year?
This year, still looking at this year.
Yes, it's remarkable, it's really, really, the attention to detail for the whole project is amazing. I hope people notice when they go in.
The scope, I'm sorry, the scope and the detail grew and grew and grew and grew. Finally, I get the impression working at the site meetings, it's finally stopped growing. They're just going to finish off what's on their plates, there's no room left for it to grow anymore. The one set of steps on the outside of the building, it probably should have had a landing that is going to need a very good handrail, it certainly wouldn't be accessibility approved. We may choose to modify that at some date in the future. We don't want to interfere with the get for us, so we'll just let her go, and we'll see where we might want to tune that around in future years. It's just an ongoing rate of steps. But it's being handled beautifully, they are safe, they are legal, but we might have some suggestions to make, bring it down the road.
Thanks very much. Moving on to Shoreland Advisory Committee, Erwin, please.
At long last, I was able to hit the send button yesterday on my computer, which sent this document to members of council. It will soon be up on our website for everyone to read and study. There will be opportunities for interested parties to appear as a delegation, which is part of our normal procedure. And I think I want to take this opportunity to thank members of the committee for many hours of work that were completed. Laura Jones, Jennifer Angrick, Ron Hampton, Chris Archer, and Sheldon Joy. It was interesting how the group came together, we had some really good discussions, and I think I'm proud of the document that we've generated. It is the beginning of the next stage of discussions. It will be, as I said earlier, opportunities for members of the community to engage with council, and I'm sure we will have some interesting discussions. So please take a few minutes to read the document, study it. If you have specific questions, please don't hesitate to send them to me, and I will make my best efforts to respond.
Okay, thanks very much, Erwin. Moving on to the Fire Hall, Ian, do you have an update?
I do. LCL started at the beginning of July, so they put trailers on site and put up a fence and got their plans together in the trailer, and put some protection around that well that we dug, so that's safe and sound. They did a site survey, you'll see a lot of springs lining up on either side of the building, showing where the footings go, they've all been dug. They've put in the forms for the cement, so that's in. Yeah, I believe cement will start to break before the footings will begin, which is great, and then they'll do, and I believe that also, we've done geotech inspection for the subtrates, so that's done. I'm told, or I asked, to make sure that the cement is tested as well as it goes in, so that we know where they're going to do cement. And so the next phase is the pre-dissection and foundation planning. But that's, they're doing a great job, I think. They shipped the west, you know, the company in the Sonny, that's the center, so that's good news. As you know, we went over budget with the coals that we got, so we eliminated the tower out of the equation, just to get the budget back to where it was. We had a resolution for a certain amount, and we wanted to beat that. So we're doing a fundraiser for the tower. That fundraiser, we've got some slides, we're going to send some letters out to everybody to see who wants to participate, you know, you can give them fifty dollars, a thousand dollars, five thousand dollars, whatever you feel comfortable doing. We could chip in on a monthly basis off your credit card. We'll have a wall if we go in. I hope we can raise half a million dollars, but we'll see how that goes as the summer progresses. And we should be able to, I'll get the documents, the slides, and the letter in to council, hopefully over the next week, if we look at it, and when you change it, it should be in there, and then we'll send it out to everyone, and hopefully we can get the funds to complete the tower. The tower's kind of important because it's ready for training. Volunteers, our firemen are volunteers, you know, they carry about fifty pounds of gear when they go into a house, especially a second-story house, and to climb a ladder. If you've never done that, you wouldn't want to do it the first time, because it's going to burn your house. So it's kind of important to have this tower, it's designed for that. It's just a steel structure with a steel cladding on the outside, there's no windows, it's shuttered, covers the window. There's no heat or anything like that, it's just for training, as well for drying hoses, so when the hoses are used, they come back and to be dried for the next time they need it. That's the importance of the tower.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, gentlemen? All right. Other committees, I just want to update residents on the Volunteer School Tax Committee. If members attended the meeting on the seventeenth, I was very pleased with the way it went, and I received interest from six residents who signed up to be a volunteer. So I sent an email out today in that regard, asking for their availability in the next week, so I hope to hear back from everyone on that. On the School Tax Committee, we had, I'll just give you a brief recap, we had about eighty to one hundred residents here at the social scene. Big thanks to Wayne Wasco, Finance Critic Lauren Stone, and Finance Minister Adrian Sala for joining us, providing their important feedback and comments on the issue. And also thanks to members of, three members of Municipal and Northern Affairs who were able to talk about taxation and assessment issues. Assessment consensus, pardon me, seems to be that residents wish to get the rebate back, wish to see education tax funded in a more fair and equitable manner, and all residents should have a vote in the Lord's Help Kirk School divisions. That's just for starters, but I do think the committee needs to get together and focus in on important, on an important priority, and work together to make something happen for our community, and keep that provincial government to make these changes in a respectful manner. So that's it on the rest of the other committees, unless... So that's it on, on the rest of the other committees, unless someone else has another committee. I'm not aware.
No, just to add to what you said, the governmental representatives who appeared at this, at this function, they sounded, and you know, let's take them at their, they sounded very receptive to letter, to issues, whatever we want to do. While they're in a receiving moment, let's, let's start loading them down with stuff.
That could include petitions, it could include a letter writing, it could include a number of things, but let's get the committee rolling and see what we can focus on. Any other, go ahead, Steve.
Oh, sorry, I already was on. So yeah, just a, just a reminder that if we were to go back to the rebate system, it would end up reducing funding for schools by about two percent a year. It would actually decrease credits for renters and allow for landlords to increase their, their profits substantially. And it would also increase payments to the rich, including the Koch brothers, who in one year got a hundred thousand dollars from the, our provincial government, as well as funneling money into Polo Park and St. Vitale and basically not helping the lower income and middle income families. So it's not, it, it's much more complicated than just simply saying that we want the rebate system back. I would highly recommend that people go on and actually watch the, watch the videos. If you want the charts, they're all available on the provincial websites. But it absolutely clearly shows that under that rebate system, schools were under, underfunded substantially. And when they were allowed to make, get the money back, that they had been cut off from. That is why we're all feeling the pain now is because of that rebate system. That has starved the divisions so much.
All right, let's see what the committee comes up with. I really feel that this should be a volunteer community committee, not a council committee. And there's obviously differences of opinion between council members on how we should move forward. So let's see what our community committee comes up with. I agree that nothing's going to be perfect and it's going to be a battle no matter how we do it. So thank you very much. All right, so move on to the committee reports resolution. Be resolved to adopt the committee reports for June as presented. May I have a moment? Ian, thank you. Second, Erwin? Any further discussion on the committee, committees? All right, all those in favor?
All right.
Carrie, Andrew Davenport. Moving on to accounts and finances. Be resolved, the following list of accounts be approved for payment. Check one three four seven two to one three five four two, an amount of five hundred eighty-nine thousand seven hundred fifty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents. Ian, move that. Thank you, second. Steve, thanks so much. Any discussion, gentlemen?
Yes, that number is a bit misleading. The five hundred eighty-seven eighty-nine thousand seven hundred fifty-eight is not really money coming out of the RM. Four hundred and thirty-six thousand six hundred eighty-seven of that is the Moonlight Inn. And so that's coming out of the person that's generously supporting that. So that's not a payment for, from the RM. So the, the main expenses, they're all kind of low. You know, there's a lot of grants, Alexander Sports Club, the ivory, East Beaches, Tech Beach Grant. And then we did the drilling, the wells, the fire hall, that was eight thousand five hundred. And then the chipping, I don't know, maybe at some point we need to take a look at what we're doing with that, because there's a lot of one-off payments. This one's twenty-six thousand four hundred and sixty, but we should add up the whole year and just see how are we on the right track there. Because we talked about this, I don't know, a year or two ago, and we went down this path, but I don't know if it's the right one or not, but at least something we should review, I think. Hydro, six thousand one hundred. And then the fire hall, I guess the existing fire hall has insurance of about five thousand dollars.
Thank you. Lon, did you want to say anything about chipping? Brush pickup, chipping?
Do you forget three years ago?
I just know.
The eight thousand dollars that we spent.
No, I know, I, I just don't know what the total is, because I'll.
That is the total. We, we hire one guy to come in twice a year to, to chip the pile.
Right.
But I think you're getting at the amount of staff that we have that is involved or trying to pick.
I'm not saying anything negative, I'm just saying I don't know what the total number is for this exercise.
Yes, gotcha.
Whereas three years ago, we looked at, as you said, eight thousand dollars, and we said, geez, should we buy a chipper, should we hire more people? I don't know if we want to revisit that. But I think we should start with, how much are we spending with this approach? And is this one a better approach? I mean, it's certainly cleaner because the wood chips are behind the, the transfer station, although we do know that they're having a problem actually with our company, so I don't know how you solve that one. But anyways, it's probably something we'll talk about later.
And Public Works has also started dividing up their timesheets to determine what they're spending on brush pickup and chipping. And it's going to be a rather shocking figure. But I think for FireSmart, we have to keep doing something. We have to keep removing the brush and we have to keep chipping it. I don't know what, what other alternatives we have, but we did look at purchasing a chipper a few years ago, Steve got some quotes. And yeah, you need, you need specialized people to operate it and that adds to that bottom line as well, to the resources bottom line. Any other comments?
I was just going to say, I'm not, I'm not suggesting solutions, I'm just, just hiding.
It's a big, it's a big amount. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I mean, I was just going to point out that, that, that number is going up substantially, but we haven't had a big windstorm yet. And we didn't have one last year and so far we haven't had one this year. So the increase in cost, I mean, you have inflation and everything, but it's, it's really coming from the fact that people are starting to realize this is something we have to do. So it's, I, I think it's a positive thing because it shows that residents are starting to take responsibility for, for their own properties and, and clearing out their, their underbrush and, and starting to clean, clean out the conifers. It's going to cost us, but the fact that we haven't had a windstorm and yet we're still pushing our limits shows that residents are really starting to finally jump on board and do the right thing.
Yeah, I think it's a good thing, but it is something that we need to keep tabs on and sit down and talk about if there is a better way to do it. All right, any further discussion, gentlemen? All right, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you.
All right.
Moving on to old business, EV chargers. At one point last week or two weeks, a week and a half ago, council had considered having a special meeting about EV chargers. We're going to have it at one thirty PM last Thursday. Ultimately, we couldn't all attend, so the meeting was canceled. So Lon asked if we wanted it on the agenda tonight. I said, sure, let's have the discussion for a discussion. We know Steve is passionate about this issue. And so is the rest of council in terms of, we know we need EV infrastructure. We just don't know how much, we don't know when, and we don't exactly know where. But we do know that it costs, it does cost money to install it. So.
Sorry.
This guy's being finicky. Thank you. I did have a few notes on it, and I'm sure Steve will have something to say, and I will certainly let you get the microphone, sir. The special meeting of council, I just want to advise residents that council has authority to call a special meeting of council. It is something that requires forty-eight hours' notice. Because we didn't go ahead of it, we did not even advertise it. Steve did go ahead though and write up his own poster and post it on municipal bullet boards, and I believe on some vehicles in parking lots. Someone sent me a photo of one that they got on their car. But it didn't say, Steve, that it was from council or, or from you, pardon me. So I got a couple of calls and emails asking if council wrote it. We did not. And I was questioned why the meeting was being held in April instead of July. But anyways, I was able to address those concerns. But I will say that council has budgeted fifteen thousand dollars for EV infrastructure for 2025. We currently have two level two EV chargers that are now paid for use. I met with a member of Hydro, our Public Works lead hand, the parking lot operator, as well as EZ EV representatives about increasing EV infrastructure to four, adding four level two chargers. I'm waiting for the quote back. Actually, Hydro's not provided the information yet. So while we agree that we need more infrastructure, we need to make sure we can cover the costs and that where we put them, both in the right spot for them. So that was what we were going to have our discussion about last weekend, we did not. So I'll stop there. Steve, would you like to jump in?
Well, you kind of already addressed one of the, one of the points I was going to make, which fits nicely in the reports, which is that we've never covered the cost for the bakery, we've never covered the cost for the store. Moonlight Inn aside from the exceptionally generous donations that, that we've received to basically refurbish the entire thing, we've never recuperated the cost for the Moonlight Inn. I, I fail to understand why something that is essential for us to maintain the VRA, moving, moving into the future, is something that we absolutely have to cover the cost with. I would also note that, again, the level twos are fine and they're, they are absolutely essential for residents who commute and know that is not just myself, is not just myself, as some people have tried to make the case for. It's actually for any resident at all who needs to commute. So the level twos are great for that, but that is not the way that we should be moving forward. It should be standard, regular outlets, just external outlets. It would be substantially cheaper on the backs of, of ratepayers. Residents in Victoria Beach do not generally come up for less than a twenty-four hour period unless you are a commuter. In almost all cases, save for some, most people are coming up for a forty-eight hour period. You do not need a level one charger for anything generally more than about twenty-four to about thirty-six hours is the average to fill up an entire EV. And that is the vast majority of what we need. The level two should be for general commuters. If we install the level ones, all the pressure comes off the level twos and you won't have, and you won't have any issues. And so, as I've proposed multiple times, even though there's been several members of council who said that they've never seen any proposals, despite that I've, I've submitted several, it is always putting an emphasis on level one chargers, which are substantially cheaper to install. We can very easily do a general sort of co-op payment type scheme where the municipality's never losing any money and it's never gaining any money. And people are just simply paying for the cost of, the cost of Hydro. But this is not something that is optional. This is something which is absolutely necessary under charter, under section six of the charter for mobility rights. And there is an extent, there is an existential threat to the VRA coming up very quickly if we don't jump on this. And I have been raising this since long before I ever got an EV. So I'm not bringing this up now because I have one. I've been saying this since I first got on council. And if we don't act, at some point, somebody who has to get to work or has an emergency in the city or one of any number of things will come up and they will not be able to get into the city or be able to get to where it is that they need to go. And the VRA will be at risk because if we leave it too long and it goes in front of a judge, we will lose that case in the same way that we absolutely have to have a taxi service. We're not allowed not to have a taxi service. If we take away mobility rights from people, then the courts will give us a set time as to when we need to put in the infrastructure. And that set time won't be in ten years, it will be immediate. And if we can't fulfill that, it leaves them with one option.
I completely disagree. I completely disagree. I've also spoken with, with not just, not just EZ EV, but other EV charger providers. None of them support level one charging in that parking lot. They all have, they have both said that the costs will be similar to installing more level two chargers. It, it all costs the RM money. And to say that we don't make money off the store, the bakery, or the Moonlight is irrelevant. You can visit the store, the bakery, or the Moonlight. I don't have, there's no gas tank here for me to fill my car if I miscalculate. Why should your charging, not just you in particular, I don't mean that, why should charging be free and available when you have to also calculate? I, I don't see how that, how that works. And the threat of a charger challenge would only cost all taxpayers, again, more money. Do you really want to go down that proverbial road?
It's not a matter of do I want to? It is a matter of our constitution. It is that simple. We have to have the taxi service because you are not allowed to remove mobility rights from residents. And you have to, especially because, and I know that if, for, for people who don't have an EV or haven't at least learned fully about electric vehicles, that you think very much in terms of gas. But it is an entirely separate technology. And because if, if Saffy's decides to spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to install a level three charger, maybe you can make the argument. But they're not going to do that. If, if Travers Bay were to install, again, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar level three charger, then maybe you can make that argument. Except that's not what they're doing. And so this does get into, into mobility rights because all EV owners have a charger at home and you are preventing them from being able to access that. And yes, I understand. I understand that, oh, well, you should have known, except that when we, when we put in those level twos, we sent a very clear signal out that we are going to start allowing to, people to bring in EVs. Had the beach never installed those level twos, yes, you're right, a hundred percent in your, on your own, it's, it's your own fault. But when we started to put those in, then that, that changed the game. Now, in terms of EZ EV, I phoned the, the owner of the company and I explained the situation to them, how Victoria Beach actually is and how most people actually use that parking lot. And he immediately said, you're right, that yes, level ones make far more sense and that you do not need to have a whole swath of level twos. Because once he eventually realized that we have upwards of fifteen hundred cars there on a weekend, that changed the entire conversation. Because he was thinking about it like everybody thinks about it, as though it is a commercial parking lot that you'd find in the city, not realizing that you, most people come up for a forty-eight hour period. That alone changes his thought process in terms of what was necessary.
All right, sorry, Graham?
Ian and I were chatting this afternoon and Ian, this would be a great place for you to present your alternative on this. I'm not trying to put you on the smartest, but.
No, no, I'll, I'll make a few comments. I agree with Penny. I don't really believe what Steve's saying as far as the legal challenge at this stage, the Moonlight Inn, the grocery store, the bakery, you know, those are all places that everybody gets to use. It's, you know, right now, Lon's provides some information on the number of users for a six-week period. It's, it's fifty-six people. Fifty-six people have used EVs out of six weeks. So I've taken some of those numbers. And the revenue, the revenue for six weeks is nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. The cost of the Hydro is a hundred and fifty dollars. You've got fifty-six users, revenue per day, or it's supposed to be about twenty-two dollars a day. So it's not really a big, big investment, it's not, certainly not a big business. So I can understand why people don't want to invest in it. Somebody has to if this is going to work the way Steve thinks everyone's going to have an EV. But, but right now, I'm, I'm looking at the fifty-six people and I'm wondering, how many of those people are here for the day? How many of those people have a Hydro? So they're looking at buying, topping up their, their, their electric car for three dollars and getting a premier parking spot, right? That's, you come in and you get that spot rather than going right, right to the. and getting a premier parking spot, right? That's, you come in and you get that spot rather than going right, right to the back. Uh, so I took these numbers and said, okay, well, let's just double it. I said, you know, from June 1st to July 15th, if I add another six weeks, right at the end of the season. So the season this year, we're based on Lon's numbers, you've got $1,800. You've got hydro cost of 300. You've got a profit of $1,500 and you've got 112 users. So I took those numbers and then I applied it to this EZV, which is a quote we got, uh, which is outlining that, um, four units cost $33,718. Um, then they expect, if you go through this, there's a number of things that they expect the RM to do, which I put an estimate, I could be wrong, but it's at least $5,000, cement other things that, uh, that they're asking the RM to do. Then, as you said, you haven't got the quote from Hydro, but I know the former CEO of Hydro and I called him and he said, "Expect that to be around $10,000."
Yep.
So now you've got a quote of $48,700 for four units. So if I use the numbers that I just explained, that means revenue will be $3700. The cost for hydro will be $600. Profit will be $3,000. So the revenue for 84 days for the whole season will be $112. Profit will be $37. So what all you do, for a simple little calculation, if you want to find out any investment you do, you look at the, um, number of, uh, amount of money you're investing, divide that by the profit, right? You want to know how long it takes to get your money back. Anybody that does investing, that's what they do. So based on this investment, it's 16 years. So again, not really a great investment. But this is not really the issue that I have. I'm just sort of pointing out the numbers. Uh, because I think Steve's right, you know, in the future, more people are going to get EVs. Right now, we've had, what, four people or five people that actually have come to council uh, to do a, uh, ask a delegation or to send an email and of course there's Steve that's been talking about this for two years or three years or more. So there's a, there's a difference between somebody who lives here full-time and somebody who comes up for the weekend. Because if you're coming up for the weekend, you've got to make sure you have enough power in your car to get home. That's your responsibility. Um, so if you look at the number of people that are full-time, I don't really know how many there are, but say it's five, say it's ten, I don't know. But I guess what I'm getting at is why is it the RM's responsibility to provide this service? I mean, if it's only going to get bigger, this is a $50,000 investment. Next year it could be $3,000. Next year, $100,000. This to me is no different from the pickleball, the curling, the social scene, community center. Just whoever wants it, come to council and put a co-op together. You know, we've got $15,000 we can use as seat money. We've got some land. We've got a proposal. Why doesn't somebody else just take it on and do it? Why, why do we do it? I mean, I don't think Lon has the time to do it. And then you get into all the issues as far as managing this thing. It's a problem.
All right. And Erwin?
You know, it's really hard to look into the future and forget accurately how quickly this is going to become a problem. Uh, the whole area of energy and management and the environment is a constantly changing thing. I, I, I agree with some of the things that Steve has said. I think the EV car becomes a serious challenge to the VRA and that's something that I'm totally committed to protecting as best I can. But the basic question I have in my own mind is whose problem is the EV charging problem? Should it not be, if I don't get enough gas in my car to get out here, am I going to call a municipality up and say, "Send a tow truck out to fill my tank up?" Or we don't have a tow truck? Uh, I think the basic problem, I have to give credit to my dear wife. She said to me about two weeks ago, "Why don't the EV car people get together, create their own co-op? Municipality's already committed $15,000. We can provide that money as seat money. We've got some land. We might be able to allow them to use, but it then becomes their problem." I don't think EV charging stations are the biggest, uh, your simple responsibility. Great.
All right. Anybody else? Steve, would you like to?
So, yeah, so on, on what Erwin just said, um, gas vehicles have an option and it is entirely different model. The VRA cuts off all EV owners' ability to charge their cars at their own residence at costs. And what the RM is doing is, and it's not my, it's not just my numbers. I have the receipts and Lon can even verify this. And in actual, actuality, it's worse than the 500% markup. I'm doing a 500% markup for what it costs me, but because the, uh, RM gets commercial rates and it's actually an extra 150% more, um, technically, but if we just go off of a regular residential rate, then the RM is charging EV owners over 500% uh, of a markup for what they pay at their, at their own personal residence. Um, so in terms, in terms of relating it over to gas, um, it's simple. The RM cuts off EV owners' ability to be able to charge and, and run their cars because our chargers are at home. Our, uh, fueling station, if you want to call it that, is at home. And the RM cuts it off. The VRA cuts it off. But I think that the real problem, uh, comes up from a conversation I've had with all of you and I, I would like each, each one of the council members to clearly define if they believe that the 2035 mandate for EV, uh, for a zero emissions vehicle is, is going to be overturned. Or if you think it will be in place in 2035.
We don't have crystal balls, Steve.
I didn't ask for that. I asked for your opinion.
I have no, I don't know, Steve. I, I do know that, um...
I've heard, I've heard each member's personal belief in private and I would like those beliefs to be said in public.
To what end, Steve?
Well, because it, it would clarify for the entire municipality as to the reason why there is this divide in council and it's, it's pretty clear and stark as to what each individual member's belief is. If you think that, um, it's none of our concern, it's none of our business and that, um, you know, it's, it might not, might never happen, then that would make it very clear as to why there'd be this pushback. If you believe and understand that the 2035 mandate's not going away, especially since, uh, our new prime minister has doubled down on it again, then you realize that this is an existential threat to the VRA. Because the 2035 mandates change what the VRA represents. And it's exactly the same as the taxi service. So if you believe that the 2035 mandates are going to be overturned, then your assumption is, is that this is a fad. If you accept the fact that the 2035 mandate is, is going to come through, then you accept the fact that this is a technology which poses an existential threat to the VRA because it is a charter issue and I highly recommend, I teach the charter, but I highly recommend that you guys go over and take a look at section six. But I would like to hear everybody's personal belief of the 2035 mandate, if you think that it will be overturned.
I don't know if it will be overturned, Steve. I'm also not so sure that it's going to be followed through on. That's 10 years from now. A lot can change and governments can change. You should know that.
Okay, so that would be a no?
Don't put words in my mouth, Steve. Don't put words in my mouth, Steve. I said I didn't know.
Okay.
Steve, I agree with some of your concerns about the VRA. The timeline, it seems like the goalposts are moving or being shaken a bit. It may be moved. Who knows? And that's not going to change the problem. And I keep coming back to the basic question is, whose problem is it when someone buys an EV car knowing that they live in the VRA and there's challenging issues for two months, three years? Is, is that a municipal problem? Or is it an individual property owner's problem?
It's the same problem as to the, as to, if you were to compare that to somebody who lives with some kind of disability. You still have to provide for them because they would have that, they would be able to provide for themselves if the VRA was not in effect. That's the reason why we have to have the taxi service. We remove the right for somebody to access their chargers. We remove their ability to be able to access their, uh, their place, uh, their fueling. That is the RM who is doing that. That's not the individual. That's not anybody else. That is government interfering. Therefore, it is government's issue resolved.
Let's talk dollars and cents for a few minutes. When we did our annual budget, we set aside $15,000 for EV charging stations. It looks like the cost for four units is going to come in probably $45,000. So at the end of the day, we've got to find an extra $30,000, uh, from our budget. I can assure you, we cannot find $30,000 of savings. So that means that we're going to have to borrow some money and therefore increase your taxes even more next year. Um, I have difficulty given the current environment we're in. The school tax issue is putting some pressure on our, our, so, so many of our residents. Are we going to put more pressure on our taxpayers because of a problem that exists for a small number of people at this point? On two or three different occasions and previous meetings over the past year, I've said, "I'd like to hear from you folks that have concerns about EV cars and charging stations." We've had three people contact us. Not exactly a ground swap. Steve, you've got some valid points. I think the question I keep coming back to and I'll say it again and again, is it the municipal's problem, municipality's problem to solve this or the EV car owners?
So the point, Steve, is that, um, right now, again, according to Lon's numbers, you've got 56 people that use this and we don't know if they're residents or day users or guests. Uh, and you've got, could have been 2,500 contractors up here, so I don't know how many people have cars. So when you look at the comparison, you're asking what 90, 99% of the population up here to pay for your fuel for your car? I just don't understand why that makes any sense. It certainly doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, I, I don't even live in the restricted area, so now I'm wondering why anybody outside of the restricted area would want to pay for the fuel for your car? Because it doesn't make any sense. You know, you've got an electric car. You bought it. You understood what you were buying. You understand you have to think about charging your car. You have to plan ahead. It's like when I drive north of Manitoba, I've got to plan ahead where I'm going to get some gas because there's not a lot of gas stations north here. And I've actually made that mistake the first year I was here and ran out of gas and had to go five miles to, you know, get a little gas to put my car. So I learned my lesson. You, but it's half-full, you fellow. You still haven't answered that question. You seem to like to change the topic every time we bring this up. But the, the point is, nobody's disagreeing with you. I mean, you're the one who's been, um, championing this thing for three years. Um, you're the one that should go out there and find other people that are interested in doing this. Take the seat money that we already have, if council wants to do that. Take the plan that they have. They've got a location. Uh, you've got a, you've got a quote here. You can, you can go with two chargers instead of four. Get a, get a, a co-op together, get a grant, but just do something rather than sit there and argue that council should just be paying for everything and council should set this up. It doesn't make any sense to me.
So, real quick, uh, to both of those two points, you guys canceled the meeting. Now, just because of, the residents won't, won't understand it. I stayed out of that discussion as to the meeting that you guys set up. I didn't say anything. All I said is, once you, once you had established the time and date that I would, uh, that I would be attending and I put out the fire. Yes, I put out the wrong bloody month. That was my issue. But I didn't have anything to do with that meeting whatsoever. I don't remember who started it, but it was somebody on council. And all of you said that you'd, you'd attend. So I, so I sent out, I sent out that messaging. Somebody...
Steve, I did not say I would attend. As a matter of fact, the request on who was going to attend occurred after you put those lines up. I have those emails to back that up, so that's not true.
Our CIO and our mayor went after the other to confirm the time and date of, of the meeting and both said the time and date of the meeting.
On Sunday and we canceled the meeting on Monday. You went ahead and put your notices up on Sunday.
Okay, so I confirmed the times and dates with the CIO and the mayor who both confirmed it to me and I put out the, and I put out the message.
You're going to confirm something, Steve.
I think Graham has something to say. Let's hear it from Graham.
Um, I, 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 I just want to turn this whole conversation very briefly to, um, a higher overview. Let's, let's look from the top down. Um, we're often called upon to, we're called upon every day to represent the wishes, the best interests of our voting residents. Okay? That's, that's given. That's what we've taken an oath to do. It was, serve the residents. And if, if there's a divided issue, then we're obliged to go along with the majority. It's called, it's called democracy. I don't feel, I certainly don't get the impression and I have no proof to offer, that the majority of taxpayers in Victoria Beach are ready and willing to subsidize EV users. I don't see that anywhere. Sorry.
I, I, I'm, I'm at a loss as to where this conversation of subsidies for, for EV owners have come up. Neither I nor any EV owner has suggested at all that the RM pays for the electricity. That's just, that's just a non-starter. Like that, there's, there's no truth to that whatsoever. All I'm suggesting is that we put in the infrastructure. I've never suggested that the RM pay for the electricity. Um, what I have suggested time and time again is that we take, is that we charge the, uh, the EV owner as a set fee for level one charging. That would, and, and I, I put, I put forward the proposal, I put forward the quotes. It'd be about $30,000 to install a couple of, a couple of level twos as well as, uh, 25 level ones. Or $30,000 for, uh, all the infrastructure for 50 level ones and that would take care of the issue for several years. Now, again, I've never suggested that, that, that anybody subsidize those, uh, those, uh, those, um, those owners. Um, you keep referring over to who, who this is, uh, who this affects. Well, the reality is the VRA. Everybody in the VRA. That is the reason the 2035 mandate is such an issue. Is because by 2035, any new vehicles are going to be, have to, are going to have to be zero emissions. And so that is all 1,500 or 2,000 cars in that parking lot. I'm not suggesting that we electrify the entire thing. That would be great, but I'm not suggesting that. What I am suggesting is that there is enough infrastructure to bypass a charter challenge, which will come if people are not able to leave their, to leave the VRA and get to their place of employment or get to anywhere outside of, outside of the VRA. Section six is absolutely clear. You do not, nobody has the right to prevent you from getting into or out of wherever it is that you want to go, provided that the, um, provided that what there is in place is reasonable. And that is my concern. So when you're talking about the majority, one of the, one of the most crucial parts of government is to look as what's coming in the future. And that is the reason the 2035 mandates are so essential is because they are literally saying what is coming down the pipe. So we know this is coming. So when you're talking about how, what, what a big investment is, yeah, it is a big investment. You know why? Because we didn't invest in it last year, uh, to, uh, we didn't put any more, um, any more in last year. We didn't put any more infrastructure the year before or the year before that. And so the more and more we kick this thing down the road, the more and more it's going to cost. And at some point, we won't be able to afford it when we are ordered to put in, to put in the infrastructure. And that is what I'm trying to avoid.
Yeah, Steve, I don't, I think you're missing the point here. Um, the, the hot, the cost of the hydro, uh, according to Lon's notes is, uh, $150. So that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the investment portion. So down the road, why should the RM pay for all of this investment? It doesn't really make any sense. You keep, you keep dodging that question. I mean, 50,000 or 45,000, I got 48,718. That's, that's what this is going to cost for, for four units. I don't know, understand why, uh, you know, if there's 56 people using it, maybe 112 throughout the whole year. You know, why should the rest of the community pay for that? I just don't get it. It's not like it's in a charter. It's more a question of just real reality, numbers, the dollar signs, right? You look at the, um, the swimming programs, the sailing programs, the tennis programs, community centers, social scene, curling club. These are people that wanted something. They've come to council. They've asked for some funding. They go and get some grants. They organize themselves. They get a board and they get something done. I mean, all you're doing is asking the council to pay for this and you're not really doing anything other than that. I mean, if you want this so badly, why don't you just go and get five or six people and get a committee going and come to council with a proposal? That would make more sense to me.
I have the answer. Next year's an election year. Next year's an election year, let's just make this an election issue. And we'll find out whether or not there is a groundswell of demand. Because I tend to agree with what, you know, what my colleague said. Graham said, "I just don't think there's a groundswell at this stage." Make it an election issue, let the people decide.
So if I can just clarify this one more time, I, I don't understand how this isn't, how this isn't clear. The RM needs to pay for it because the RM removes mobility rights. That's why. If you remove a right from somebody, you have to then provide that right in a reasonable way. And so.
And let the group mount a charter challenge and see what happens.
If that comes to pass, and I've been trying to warn council, if that comes to pass and we leave it for so many years, the way that the courts work, they will tell us to do it now. And if we can't afford it, then that's, that's the end of the bylaw. We would not be allowed to have the VRA today. If we didn't have the VRA, the community got together to demand that we had the VRA, we would not be allowed to have it, mostly because of the charter. But because it predates the charter, we are allowed to have it. But there's a reason no other community in our country has something like we do. And it's because it removes mobility rights. But we are allowed to keep it because we have the taxi service. This is the exact same problem. And if we keep kicking it down the road, it will be an existential threat to the VRA. And that is my ultimate concern.
There may be worse than I asked, but to date on this issue, I think the issue should be tabled. We've had a good discussion tonight. People will be watching this on, on their computers. And let's see whether or not there's any kind of groundswell occurs in the next couple of weeks. If it does, maybe that might change my mind. But to date, to date, we have not seen any kind of groundswell. We've got a roar on issues like snowmobiles and ATBs, but we've had just a whimper on EV charging. Set this aside for now. Call for, you know, for discussion in another, another council meeting.
All right, I just want to wind up with a couple of comments. As of now, according to Manitoba EV, there are just under 400 EV charging stations in Manitoba. 285 stations are specifically located in Winnipeg. The province is actively expanding its EV charging infrastructure to support the growing demand for electric vehicles. Manitoba has about 4% of all EVs in the country. Granted, we're a smaller province. On the charter, according to www.canada.ca, if your community does not provide EV charging, which we do, it may not directly infringe on your charter rights and freedoms in Canada as the charter protects various rights and freedoms, including freedom of expression and equality. However, local regulations and community policies may affect the availability of EV charging stations. And they refer to laws in Ontario that have made it more challenging for condo corps, for instance, to refuse requests to install EV chargers. Therefore, while the charter itself does not directly address community infrastructure, local laws may influence your ability to access EV charging. And that statute from 1933 that makes this community so unique, that we pay dearly for, is, according to you, going to be under threat? Because people who make the choice now to buy EVs, who may not have to make that choice, we don't know what it actually will be in 10 years, who make the choice to live here, to become, they make this their permanent residence, knowing, knowing full well that they don't have access to their home for two months? Do you really think that, that residents who don't own EVs are going to put up with that and risk losing the VRA? That is, that is who we are. A big part of who we are. And you, you have told me yourself that you would mount the charter challenge.
To try to protect the VRA, yes. Because if we do it now, we can pay for it. If we, if we keep leaving it, we won't be able to pay for it.
It's contrary, you're contrary to protecting the VRA by launching a charter challenge.
No, because if we can afford something that's, that's several thousand dollars now, that is going to be affordable versus if we wait for several years when half of that, half of that parking lot is EVs, then we won't be able to afford it at the time. So the sooner we jump onto this, the faster we'll be able to protect the VRA. And that, and what you just read off does not assume that the municipality is the ones who are preventing you from accessing your property. The reason it was written like that is simple. Is because, yes, the municipality in terms of somewhere like, has no responsibility to provide charging. That's 100% correct. Because you can still access your property. But the RM.
This conversation is going around and around and around. It's time to turn it down.
That actually answering her, her point? So no, I'm sorry, it is very relevant. Because the difference from what you read off is it's an entirely diff, it's an entirely different situation. So you can't read that off and say that this applies to the VRA when the VRA does not apply to what was said. It's a different.
I disagree, Steve. We're talking in circles here, and I'm glad, though, that we did have the opportunity to have this discussion. This is, I believe this is part of the discussion we would have had had we gone ahead with the special meeting, which we did not. So thank you for that. I will, I'm hearing that I need to move on. Okay. So I will move on to new business, I believe, yes. Beaches of 59, amazing race event will be held here on Saturday, August 9th, from 12 to 2:00 in the Village Green. East Beaches Pride Parade will be in the Village Green on Sunday, August 10th, at 1:00 p.m., set up at noon. And they will be doing a little parade around a small part of municipality, very small. The PB Dog Show is now on, on the same morning in the Village Green, but I don't see the battle post conflict. Updated on the school tags meeting and the fire safety pamphlet, which Lon, myself, our fire chief, and our emergency coordinator have been working on is being completed, and we hope it will be sent to print very shortly so we can have fire safety information and evacuation information out there for our residents. Because the smoke's not going our way. Even though we had a tremendous rain last night, we're still very dry, have been very dry. So anything else, gentlemen?
Okay, well, we're at the, the tail end with the correspondence and information. Just a brief note that Mayor McMorris and I were able to attend the Wannosteen Cottage Owners Association Annual General Meeting on June 29th. There was a lot of content. Much of it revolves around the Wannosteen cottages. Are bound and determined to celebrate Wannosteen's 70th anniversary. And council shifted some, some dollars towards that, which was voted on actually last year. So there'll be more, more coming down the line on that. And there will be materials at, at various vendors. And, and once again, the Wannosteen group has announced that they will have their annual barbecue corn roast lined up at the end of the year. At the end, we have enjoyed visitors, residents from all parts of the municipality have attended that in Ed Ravel Park. We've had a couple hundred people came out for a real funding. So we just wanted to acknowledge that they're up and running and doing some popular stuff.
A quick announcement. The police board will be having a public meeting tomorrow evening here at the Social Scene, starting at 7:30. You're all encouraged to come out in your tents.
All right, anything else? Steve, do you have anything you need to add? All right, I'll move on to adjourn. Be it resolved July 22nd, 2025, regular meeting of council now be adjourned. Next meeting will be Tuesday, August 5th, 2025, 1:00 p.m. in Victoria Beach at the Social Scene, number 3 T Road. May I have a louver? Thank you, Graham. Second, Erwin, Ian, someone with an I. All right, all those in favor?
All right.
Carrie, thank you. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, everybody.